Thank you to all of our community who continue to shop local and utilize online services shipped locally. Because it's definitely contributing to our E-S-R, the penny on the self pack. So thank you and all of that goes to our bus pick, our technology, and our buildings. In your packets, the school reports are available, they're also available for the public. We think that our schools continue to have good progress. The calendar of the things for both schools and activities is included in those reports. Just as a reminder for all of us, we have approximately twenty-three students at the elementary schools that have had continued issues with absences, fifteen days or more. And we have about forty-four students at the middle school and high school that have had issues. So again, as we are a person and a leader of the school here, we like to encourage everybody to finish strong and to attend school and to stay engaged with their learning. And in our superintendent's report, I did a quick overview of our federal S.R. money. That was the CARES Act money that was received. Just wanted to do our progress report on that. We are completely on track with the spending. Our buses are already being completed, that we purchased with that. Our literacy apprival for the elementary schools been purchased. We're continuing to use that fund for literacy coaching and modeling in the classroom. And that is also being used for our custodial services. In terms of the payments for our contract services for that. So no changes to S.R. and we're on track with that report and that spending. I would like to take a moment this evening. Next week, March fourteenth to the eighteenth, Governor Kemp and the state of Georgia has recognized it as a public school board appreciation week. And because this week is our board meeting, we wanted to take a moment and just extend a special thanks to our board for the work that they do. As you know, our board members are elected office and they choose to do that to serve our schools. They focus on policy, on building the budget, the work on the evaluation of the superintendent. And they help us move forward with reaching the vision and mission we set for this excellence for all students in college and prayer readiness. So we appreciate the work of this board and we would like to be extending a great few of this. Next, just a reminder to this board that your requirements of training this summer is June fifteenth to the eleventh. It is our Georgia School Board Summer Conference and Delegate Assembly where we go over the recent legislation and your training for your credit offers. We will, if you have any concerns or issues, I may just respond and just let you know. Moving down the agenda for the superintendent's report, it gives me a great pleasure tonight to have this firm introduce a very special group from the elementary school. We are so proud of these student leaders and what they do for our school. And we want to recognize our safety patrol.
Good evening. It gives me great pleasure to introduce to you a very important group of students to CCEC. And that is our CCEC Safety Patrol members. I just want to share a little bit about what safety patrol means to CCEC. First of all, the job of safety patrol is to protect students by enforcing hallway rules on their way to and from classrooms and also assisting wherever needed. These students also serve as role models for younger children who look up to them. And everybody desires to be on the safety patrol. However, this is a very special recognition that we only give to our most important and valuable fifth grade students. At CCEC, our safety patrol members take pride in their roles and welcome their responsibility of keeping all of our little Panthers safe. And we thank them for doing so. So without further ado, I want to introduce to you our twenty-one, twenty-two CCEC Safety Patrol members. They are as follows. Novaya Allen. Hunter Beasley. Michael Beecher. Orion Brown. Connor Camp. Kelsey Carr. Tristan Comstock. Xavier Comstock. Bailey Dillon. Carlesia Donovan. Tanner Floyd. Courtney Marion. Regal Mathis. William Porter. Aiden Roberts. Addison Tyer. And Lucas Williamson. I present to you our CCEC Safety Patrol members. Congratulations. And great job to all of our members. And I just can't stress enough how great of a job these students do each and every day. I promise you that Ms. Jones and I are always calling them when we can't find them. But they are a very responsible group of fifth graders and we are going to dearly miss them when they transition to the middle school. But we know that you guys are going to do well in sixth grade as well. Congratulations again. Thank you.
And as we are looking at our fantastic programs in the school system, I'd like to highlight one of our fastest-growing, most skilled programs that we have. And where this program was, where it is now is unbelievable in terms of professionalism and what it's doing for not only our students but our community. So tonight, I'm pleased to introduce Mr. Woodward as our audiovisual teacher. And he is going to bring members of the audiovisual class so that they can share program highlights, especially for you little Panthers, so you can see what's in store for you as you get to high school.
All right, thank y'all guys for coming tonight. And I have three awesome students here. Porcelle Peebles, as you know, her mom works there. They do a tremendous job at our school, literally almost everything that you can imagine they do. They do a lot and we owe a lot to them. Adam Yelson in my film one class and Matthew's in my film two class. Our film, our film class at this school is unprecedented. Literally when I say that, I mean it with anything in our nation. Matt wrote a film. He came in as a film one student, wrote a film which we produced from pre-production all the way through post and then edit. The film is a little over twenty minutes long. Can you imagine a normal feature film at ninety minutes long? Produce a film in this school at that level in a film class is just pretty amazing. That film is on our YouTube channel which we have, which is Chatto Film, which we really encourage you guys to see. And I won't Matt just to tell you guys, again, as a young man, but now in my film two class, a little bit about what we do in our class and just some of the things that we have here at Chatto that maybe some other schools do not have.
So sorry that I'm sweating ass, it's just kind of what happens when you do like me. But yeah, I'm going to talk about Chatto, come and stop by here. Last year, when I was in ninth grade, and it was just a really great school. But when I came here, I had it's boom. And I just knew that I wanted to be in that class just because of the energy and all of that. So I took that class and I was thinking it was going to be just cameras and stuff like that. But we started filming like a week into being in that class, which was just amazing. So like, you know, I've always wanted to do stuff, be a screenwriter, stuff, a filmer, anything like that. So to be able to learn from someone who was in the industry, you know, it was a really awesome experience. Also being able to, you know, do a live podcast, which, you know, no other, I don't think any other school in the nation that does a live podcast, does any podcast. Not to mention live, but the fact that we do that is really awesome. Fact that we made a movie, which is really cool, one that I wrote. And, you know, live broadcasting, we were only supposed to do two of those. We did three of them. One of them was just straight off the cuff and all of them were really amazing. So yeah, it was really cool, really cool. Ms. Peebles also is a really great help when it comes to that. I want everyone to look at her, you know, get her all, get her all the bears. Just a little small story, me and Woodward decided to play a prank on her earlier today. I think I got a little sound like that on awkward. So.
You know, we have a slave that is at the school and him and Matt join in and we were able to prank him. So we had a lot of fun. But again, I encourage you guys to go to our YouTube channel, the school have a YouTube channel in itself. But we have a YouTube channel and our social media as well with Chatto Film. And you can see all the things that we're doing from our live broadcast that we do in the school, which is called ChatCast. We do it and it's live, it's not pre-recorded and then edited, it's live. Which is a huge, huge deal, huge deal. At Valdosta State University, we were one of the only universities that did a live newscast. And it was us and UNLV. And so they stopped doing it. At my own monitor, Valdosta State University doesn't do a live newscast anymore. They don't do anything live because it really is a big undertaking to do something live like the news we do. And we do a live, a live broadcast. We broadcast the sports, we broadcast basketball, we live broadcast soccer, and we live broadcast baseball. And we've done baseball live recaps of the baseball game, which they're playing tonight. Coach Harrelson is watching the game intently.
It's three to three and they called it for light. They don't have lights in this room.
So we've got a stellar baseball team as well. We've been trying to do a lot of that. But please go check us out at Chatto Film and check out and see all the great things that we're doing in these students of the month. We really appreciate everybody's support as well. Are you guys something else you want to say?
Can we give a like round of applause for Woodward who does this like?
We are just so pleased with this. And the flexibility that our system has because of a charter waiver meaning that we are able to bypass state rules, it has allowed us to be able to tap for someone like Mr. Woodward with his excellent background in the industry to come in and be a teacher here. So we're very excited about that and very pleased with the future of audiovisual and the future of our students who are learning these fields. Next on our. Mr. Camp doesn't think I'm loud enough, which is so unusual. Next on our agenda is student and employee recognition. And I'm going to shift it up just a tiny bit because we have such a large crowd. We vote on our personnel later in our agenda, but because we have so many people here, I would like for us to take a minute and recognize, I'm going to let him come to the front, our prospect that we will be voting on this evening. And that is Mr. Ryan McKenzie, who will be leading our Panthers on the football field. I'll put him on the spot, bringing him up here, but I know we already addressed many of our students. And so I think it's a fantastic opportunity for you all to know, it's not just about athletics, it's about growing our judgment and our community to show the excellence that we can achieve. And having the right question out the hale takes us to the next one.
Ryan McKenzie, patiently waiting to be approved. I've been sitting on this for a couple of weeks and really excited to get over here. About excellence, about trusting the process, and really excited to get the guys together so that we can train, we can do things. Want to make sure we're exposed into every incident in the world. Want to make sure that we're winners on the field and in the classroom. Want to make sure that we're champions in the crisis where. So again, I'm excited, fired up, can't wait to get over here. And I want to go in the back so I can watch the hands go up so I can fish. Thank y'all for having me. And thank y'all for taking the time to let me ask you. Thank you.
So we will begin with our school recognitions in this morning. You know, share with our student and employee of the month.
Thank you. It gives me great pleasure to be back before you to introduce you to our employee of the month and our student of the month. And I will start with our employee of the month. Our employee of the month for the month of February is Ms. Tina Delisandro in kindergarten at CCEC. And I will share this about Ms. Delisandro as she makes her way up. Ms. Delisandro demonstrates a high commitment towards student achievement and ability to motivate and encourage students to exceed their academic goals. I'll be honest, we lost a kindergarten teacher in October. And when we got noticed that we were going to lose that teacher, I panicked. It is very hard in education to find a great teacher after the school year has already started. And we hit the jackpot with Ms. Delisandro. I can't rave enough about her and her instruction in the classroom with her students. And I know that her parents would agree that she is amazing and awesome. And we have been truly blessed to add her to our staff. She's only been with us a short while. However, her commitment to education, her work ethic, she collaborates with her colleagues and shares instructional strategies. And she's just not a great teacher, she's also a great veteran teacher. But we are so happy to have you as a part of our staff, Ms. Delisandro. So congratulations. Ms. Delisandro, if you were saying you can assist with our student of the month, don't put any words. All right, and now we will continue on with student of the month. And we'll start with our youngest pre-K student of the month, Colt Conley. When Colt received this recognition, he said, yes, finally. Colt has worked very diligently to become a beginning reader, according to his teacher, Ms. Richards. He gives her one hundred percent daily in all activities and he's such a joy to teach. Colt is not only a beginning reader, he has also mastered the kindergarten standard of counting to one hundred. Colt is an amazing little guy. Congratulations to Colt. And our kindergarten student of the month is Valance Pukawie. Not sure if Valance is here tonight, but I will share this. His teacher had this to share, that Valance is always very helpful, kind, and such a caring little boy. He always follows directions and takes pride in his work. He takes responsibility for his actions and always does his very best. Congratulations to Valance. And our first grade student of the month has been anxiously awaiting this night. November Greve. I think she has told everyone on our campus that she was getting her award tonight. And we are so excited to give it to her because she has worked extremely hard. Her teacher had this to say about her. This November has made such significant progress, not just in the classroom, but at CCEC as a whole. Her behavior has improved tremendously and her academic scores have also increased. She is also willing, always willing to try, even when her task might be difficult. We are so very proud of the work that she has shown and know that she has even farther to go. Congratulations, November Greve. And our second grade student of the month is Xavier Williams. Xavier works hard every day, according to his teacher. He is well behaved, respectful, polite to his peers, and always tries to do the right thing. He is always willing to work with and help others whenever needed. He is such a joy to have in my classroom. Congratulations Xavier. And our third grade student of the month is Raven Rattke. And Raven's teachers have this to say about her. Raven completes all assignments and homework. Every day she displays good conduct. She arrives at school prepared and ready to learn each and every day. I have observed Raven participating and always giving her full effort in all areas. Congratulations Raven. And our fourth grade student of the month is Samantha Dale Taylor. Samantha Dale is an exceptionally hardworking student. She never quits or gives up, even when something might be too hard. She doesn't rush through her work and always takes her time to do her absolute very best. She is always polite to adults and kind to her peers. Congratulations Samantha Dale. And our fifth grade student of the month is Jalen Moses. And although Jalen is not with us tonight, I will share this. His teachers had to say this about him. He has made a drastic change since the beginning of the school year. He is always constantly trying to do his best in class and also has improved his attitude. He has made tremendous growth. I am so very proud of him. Congratulations Jalen. Congratulations to all of our CCEC students of the month and employee of the month.
Next, I'd like to ask those who come recognize the middle school and high school employee of the month and student of the month. And for all of you who may be using the TV, after this moment, we will take a short break for anyone who wants to switch or to use the backdrop.
Good evening, everybody. Always excited when I see a large crowd here. Many meetings where there's not anything like this, so this is great. Start with, we want to recognize our staff member of the month. And this is a person that I could not make it without her. She's the kind of person that she just, when there's a problem, she fixes it. And she doesn't need any recognition, she just sees something that needs to be done and she feels in and makes it right. Can't ever have too many of those people around you. So our employee of the month is Claudia Adams. Congratulations. All right. Now we're on to our student of the month. Our sixth grade student of the month is Ms. Lily Conley. Good luck to her, Conley. Lily is a great student that has in the classroom. She was nominated by multiple teachers. And they say that Lily is hardworking, respectful, and responsible. They note that Lily is always willing to help out her fellow classmates. What a good word, congratulations. Our seventh grade student of the month is Braylon Miller. Braylon was nominated by her social studies academic board teachers. And noted that Braylon competed well under pressure and is a great addition to the team. Thank you for your hard work and dedication to your academics, Braylon. Good job. And I believe we advanced to the twenty-seventh round, which to my understanding is the furthest we've ever advanced. And so that was a great job by our team. Our eighth grade student is Ms. Malaysia Harris. Malaysia, look, this is what's funny. I don't write this stuff and what I was thinking in my head is what I, is the first sentence I saw. Malaysia is the true definition of a Chatto Panther. That's what I was thinking when I called her Sam. She has been nominated multiple times. Jayden's teacher said that he represents a great classroom example of integrity. He's always willing to assist not only his classmates, but teachers as well. Jayden is the type of student that you can count on to lend a helping hand. We're proud to call you the Chatto Panther. Tenth grade is Mr. Crafton Brooks. Crafton couldn't be here tonight, he's on our track team, so they're competing in the SCOTUS camp. Our eleventh grade student of the month is Alexis Zaniga. Alexis is very responsible, is a very responsible student and friend. Always willing to go out of her way to help a friend in need. Both her teacher and counselor wrote about specific times where Alexis spoke of where another classmate was struggling and needed a champion. All right. And twelfth grade is Elijah Phillips. Elijah has been actively involved across the school for many years in the JRTC program and an active member of the rifle team. Elijah's nominated teacher said that Elijah is responsible and a thorough student who takes his commitments seriously. Congratulations. And these are our students of the month. And now, I want to recognize one more group of students. These are the Young Georgia Authors. This is a competition for each grade. And each student submits an essay. And then the top student from each grade is selected and then they compete with other schools. So our sixth grade award winner for Young Georgia Authors is Taylor Leach. Taylor is an extremely sweet kid, always happy to everybody. Our seventh grade student is Braylon Miller. Congratulations. Our eighth grade student is Ryan Brown. Ninth grade is Lillian Reeder. Congratulations. Our tenth grade Young Georgia Author is Serenity Barnum. Thank you, Elijah. Our eleventh grade Young Georgia Author is Dylan Macy. And twelfth grade is Bailey Savage.
And now I'll present our Elementary Young Georgia Authors. Kindergarten Darren Kerdine. First grade Tori Brown. Second grade Aysen Pace. Third grade Haley Williamson. Fourth grade Jaden Smith. And fifth grade Morgan Nettles. And congratulations to all of our Young Georgia Authors. Congratulations, everybody.
We have, our group will be participating across the regions, and there is a competitive group that we do not need to walk through our region, through other regions across the state that will be spoken and judging of work, and this is on creativity and the ability to synthesize information. So it's very, I love our writing, and we're so proud of our winners at school, and look forward to in the next month, hopefully to have some regional winners that are able to be recognized and to showcase the remedy. So congratulations, guys. We know writing shows not only that you're able to have skills, but you're able to use that knowledge and apply it in your day-to-day work. So thank you for what you do. We have a short break for anyone who wants to do a picture. We will come back in about five or 10 minutes, and we'll do our act.
We know this week is School Board Appreciation Week, so in honor of our school board, we wanted to take a moment to express our gratitude.
Hi, my name is John Michael. I've been a student in Chaco for four years. After learning about what the board does and who is on it, I've truly come to appreciate one thing, and that is our great college program. Being able to take full advantage of it will help prepare me for college, and it's been completely free. I truly appreciate everything that the board has done for me. Thank you so much.
I am thankful for the Board of Education because of their ability to pick a good coaching staff to lead our student athletes at this school and to help us become better people in general, like Coach Reeder for the soccer team. He has helped us grow as a team and as people in general, a great amount since he's become the coach of the soccer team, and led us to become the first in history region champion soccer team for our school. He's an amazing, understanding man who teaches us lessons on and off the field constantly, and is all-around good guy in general. And without the board approving him as a coach, we wouldn't have him, and we wouldn't be the team that we are now.
My name is Kichu Watosi. I've been here in Chaco for three and a half years. I am a senior now. I've taken welding for a year now. Took welding one, took welding two. From those two classes, I've learned how to stick weld, how to do MIG, how to do oxy cutting, how to do plasma cutting. And I'm glad for the Board of Education for bringing someone like Ms. Collins and letting her teach us how to weld safely and effectively and efficiently. And I'm also glad for the Board of Education for bringing a program like this so we can use this for the future.
Hi, I'm Shayle Peoples, and I'm Vice President of the FBLA. We wanted to show our appreciation by making personalized mugs and letters for each of our board members. We wanted to thank them from the bottom of our hearts. We wanted to thank them from the bottom of our hearts.
We know this week is School Board Appreciation Week, so in honor of our school board, we wanted to take a moment to express our gratitude.
Hi, my name is John Michael. I've been a student in Chaco for four years. After learning about what the board does and who is on it, I've truly come to appreciate one thing, and that is our great college program. Being able to take full advantage of it will help prepare me for college and it's been completely free. I truly appreciate everything that the board has done for me. Thank you so much.
I am thankful for the Board of Education because their ability to pick a good coaching staff to lead our student athletes at this school and to help us become better people in general. Like Coach Reeves for the soccer team. Um, he has helped us grow as a team and as people in general a great amount since he's become the coach of the soccer team. And led us to become the first in history region champion soccer team for our school. Um, he's an amazing, understanding man who teaches us lessons on and off the field constantly and is all-around good guy in general. And without the board approving him as a coach, we wouldn't have him and we wouldn't be the team that we are now.
My name is Kichu Tosi. I've been here in Chaco for three and a half years. I'm a senior now. I've taken welding for a year now. Took welding one, took welding two. From those two classes, I've learned how to stick weld, how to do MIG, how to do oxy cutting, how to do plasma cutting. And I'm glad for the Board of Education for bringing someone like Ms. Collins and letting her teach us how to weld safely and effectively and efficiently. And I'm also glad for the Board of Education for bringing a program like this so we can use this for the future.
Hi, I'm Shayle Peoples and I'm Vice President of the FBLA. We wanted to show our appreciation by making personalized mugs and letters for each of our board members. We wanted to thank them from the bottom of our hearts.
The group is so respected.
I am very excited. Again, I would like to recommend our proposed FY23 school calendar. This is devised after much work with our teacher and support staff advisory group, our student advisory members, and the feedback from our schools and school governance members. Um, so again, that is a vote of approval and that is our proposed FY23 school calendar. It does again include alignment and spring rates as long as that, and it does include additional partial day that we had this year for call staff and training. It gives our students opportunity to have some extended moments home to work on. Um, next we have our certified renewals and because we do have members of the board who have kinships with some employees, those will be taken out of this note. So at first, I would like to recommend the slate of certified renewals with the exception of kinship individuals for the Board of Education, elementary school, and middle school, high school. So this is one that everyone should vote on if you agree to that renewal. And then the next is our slate of individuals who do have kinship with the board. And so I would like to recommend for those that voted in, approval of those individuals. Next is, I would like to recommend a very fantastic opportunity, approval for out-of-state travel for our drill team as they have been selected to compete at the National Drill JRTC Competition. So approval for out-of-state travel. And then lastly, I would like to recommend renewal of our 4H agreement with the UGA extension office. And there is no public comment per our board policy, DCPI. So the next item on the agenda on new hack of your review, just a follow-up for budget planning. It's a document that showcases the areas that what we can accomplish this year with our SPOS and general funds. Uh, based on the itemized list from our departments and schools. And then you see a planning cycle for next year in terms of what's been requested. And we do know that that wish list doesn't mean that it's everything. We want to make sure that we're building a fund balance for future years. And that our SPOS balance for many highlights and due debt services and assist with any additional purchases that we need. I've also included for your review the strategic goal areas because again, we do want to make sure that our recommendations align with the strategic plan in terms of teaching and learning workplace organization and community. And this is being open for the publishing. So this is a time of doubt, so it's a matter of that. And the one thing that we do want to make sure that we're aware of is there has been a request for additional instructional staff. And that is absolutely needed with our work. And that would be a return cost because we will have those positions. We will have, you know, we continue to need those. So we want to make sure that that return costs along with the salary scale increase and along with the benefits that we'll have to pay per the government passing of the, the bonus. The teaching positions are, 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 are. Please note that one of our big areas, and of course our public, one of our big areas that we have invested a lot with our transportation and our buses. And we currently have a bus shop that is, um, it's, it's horrible. Um, it, you know, it's a safety hazard. It has turbines. It's, it's not, um, when you talk about pick-up line, we said that for every pickup line, more than that bar, so we, um, or our new assistance. So we do want to build out a way to build a new bus shop. But in that bus shop, we're also talking about offices. Because we do know that some of the boxers, the municipal boxes, um, they have, um, not been, it's a recommendation, they're not the work. So the money to invest in those, that's the boat, that's the purpose of the office of the new bus shop allows everybody to kind of do that for anybody. We want to build that out over the next three years in terms of the office of new, I don't know, more. With no debt, we, we have to build. We will continue to have this as part of our conversation each month, um, certain plans in April, if you're interested, we'll get to that together. So we'll see what we can do for this year, including items. Um, and then we will, um, we label through to that, have some question or case, and this one, Morgan, probably has an issue.
We know this week is School Board Appreciation Week, so in honor of our school board, we wanted to take a moment to express our gratitude.
Hi, my name is John Michael. I've been a student in Chaco for four years. After learning about what the board does and who is on it, I've truly come to appreciate one thing, and that is our great college program. Being able to take full advantage of it will help prepare me for college and it's been completely free. I truly appreciate everything that the board has done for me. Thank you so much.
I am thankful for the Board of Education because their ability to pick a good coaching staff to lead our student athletes at this school and to help us become better people in general. Like Coach Reeves for the soccer team. Um, he has helped us grow as a team and as people in general a great amount since he's become the coach of the soccer team. And led us to become the first in history region champion soccer team for our school. Um, he's an amazing, understanding man who teaches us lessons on and off the field constantly and is all-around good guy in general. And without the board approving him as a coach, we wouldn't have him and we wouldn't be the team that we are now.
My name is Kichu Tosi. I've been here in Chaco for three and a half years. I'm a senior now. I've taken welding for a year now. Took welding one, took welding two. From those two classes, I've learned how to stick weld, how to do MIG, how to do oxy cutting, how to do plasma cutting. And I'm glad for the Board of Education for bringing someone like Ms. Collins and letting her teach us how to weld safely and effectively and efficiently. And I'm also glad for the Board of Education for bringing a program like this so we can use this for the future.
Hi, I'm Shayle Peoples and I'm Vice President of the FBLA. We wanted to show our appreciation by making personalized mugs and letters for each of our board members. We wanted to thank them from the bottom of our hearts.